The only thing we're talking about is a possible putting up another diverter in a neighborhood. And who knows, maybe a diverter would work in some neighborhood where the neighbors wouldn't be so upset. And I just don't like closing the door.
Well, what if there was a school that had an issue and the school came and said, "We have a problem." I mean, if you had this policy, could...I mean, it says the council can override it. Correct?
The council can override any policy we set at any given time.
That's what I thought.
We set an oak tree ordinance. We consistently make exemptions. I'm saying this is a general policy for our staff is going to be clear to Andrew and Robert that when the Eighth Street community comes in and the Linda Vista community comes in, followed by dozens, one real close, they're going to say, "The council policy is X until such time is not X."
May I suggest somebody makes a motion? See where we're at on this?
Well, I think we've been just trying to figure out what wording needs to be to explicitly detail what, you know, of our comfort zone of what this does and doesn't do it. Because I think there's a lot of confusion about it. And it is redundant because it already says you can't gate public roads. And I understand that part of it, but there's still confusion by people. So Frank, you're okay with adding all those other things in?
Well, Mayor, go ahead. Just kind of listening to what council says, I think you want language in there specifying it does not deal with private streets. It doesn't deal with the status quo. And it doesn't deal with bulbouts and any other calming measures.
Well, can we spell them out? Ken?
We can.
Okay.
I'm not sure we need to wordsmith that here right now, but those are the three things I'm hearing.
And it doesn't affect neighborhoods that are privatized?
Correct.
And are maintaining their own?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, that, those are my comments for the moment.
Want to make a motion?
I just, so specifically, Frank, what is different? I mean, what in your mind is the impetus for doing this?
The impetus, well, it started because of Valley Calgrove. We did the exact same thing. And that's why I understand any future council can change something. The prior council, after going through that for, was it two years? Two years? It was terrible. I mean, it was a decade, but two years. And the council made it clear, we're, we want to make a clear message to the community that this is our policy. Now, neighbors are coming back and you just chip away, chip away, chip away. And I'm not sure for staff, if Andrew and Robert can clearly say right now, after diverters, that we're, we won't close a public road. Because I just know that every time we deal like Ben's, a huge crowd's coming. Because it is about convenience and quality of life. They're going to come. So I say we put it right back out there again, with all these other communities lined up, that yeah, we'll look at no left turns at a certain time. We'll look at speed cushions. We'll look at speed humps, bulbs, all the things that calm traffic. But we're not going to close the road because when you close that road and those 3,000 cars are going to go to someone else's, there's no equity. And then once we say we're going to close this road, then everybody's coming. So I think as policy decision makers, it's okay to say, "Public roads for the public." I think it's all we're saying here today.
But Frank, we already have...
But you look at Steinway, you mentioned Irvine. I'll tell you right now, the people in Steinway can't wait for Irvine to go through to Keystone because they take the brunt of everything. So they're going to be on board because they take all the brunt from White Canyon right now. So, and there's a big sign saying it's going to happen, just like it did at Ben's. I mean, all our roads were determined decades ago. When they get built, they've been noticed, so...
True. One of the things that keeps coming back to me is, is the concern about speed. And every neighborhood has the same fear. They're trying to back out of their driveway, their kids are out there, their grandkids, and they're just frustrated with it. And I think that most of us are frustrated with it. So, I mean, to me, if you're going to say, "Well, we can't do this," then we have to be a lot more proactive.
Correct.
In using the alternatives and say to staff, "Staff, if there's a problem, you've got to go out and solve it. You've got to use whatever alternatives there are to get the neighborhood to where it feels and is responsibly being safe." And you've got the list of things you can do. I know some neighborhoods don't like bulbouts. They don't want the restrictions. But, but you've got to use the mechanisms to slow them down because that, that makes everybody comfortable and it takes the stress out. So I, I would just like to say that if we're going to pass this, there needs to be some impetus from the council to staff to say, "We've got to be more proactive in keeping our neighborhoods more in line with what's rational for the speed that should be in that neighborhood." When people are doing 60 miles an hour in a neighborhood that should be doing 25, it's terrifying. And it's going on everywhere. Because everybody's stressed and in a hurry, and they're not thinking about it. They don't mean to do it, they're just not thinking about it. I don't know how to put that into a motion, but I think if the council says, "Staff, we're serious, this has got to get dealt with." Ken, you could say something. It'd be okay.
Let's talk. Mayor, my understanding, none of this, this policy does not deal with speed at all. It's either you're driving on it or not. That's the intent of this.
Well, that might be the...
I mean, all those other tools really are dealing with speed. This isn't. This is either you can drive on the road or you can't.
But what caused this is the speed. That's what causes it. You end up with this because the issue didn't get dealt with. People got frustrated. I don't blame them.
It wasn't just speed, though. It was amount of trips.
Well, and you reduced that with signage.
So the volume was, that was an issue.
Could probably cover this guys until daylight. I'd like to suggest somebody makes a motion.
I'll move the recommended action with all the changes that were brought forward by the council.
That includes being proactive with speeding in neighborhoods?
I think that message's clear to staff.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Thank you. City Clerk?
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
No.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on over to item 13. City Clerk, this time I'll ask the City Clerk to announce the ballot results.
Thank you, Mayor. The results of item 13, the drainage benefit assessment area, total ballots, the total assessment amount of the ballots received was $26,375.23. The total yes ballots was 100%, $26,375.23. There were no ballots cast. Therefore, there is no majority protest.
Thank you. Since we do not have a majority protest, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolutions confirming the diagrams.
I'll move.
And assessments. I better finish this. I've got, I have a city attorney on me approving the engineer's report and approving the formation of drainage benefit assessment area 2008-2 and the associated levies and assessment. I already have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pretend Ferry? Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item number 14. At this time, I ask the Clerk to announce the ballot results.
Thank you. This is for the Streetlight Maintenance District. Total ballots, total assessment amount of the ballots received was $1,728.15. The total yes ballots represented 72% of that amount, which is a total of $1,250.45. The no ballots represented 28% or $477.70. Again, there is no majority protest.
Thank you. Since we do not have a majority protest, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolutions confirming the diagrams and assessments, approving the engineer's report and approving the annexations and the levies of assessment. Is there a motion? We have a motion and a second? Motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Ferry?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to our public participation. Do we have speakers? Thank you. We've had about a half a dozen speakers, ladies and gentlemen, for the public participation. Our first speaker will be Lori Denman, followed by Richard Angulo, followed by Phil Rollins. Lori? If I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council staff. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Lori Denman. You pronounced it right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joining me is Richard Blackbear Angulo with the Schumash Tribe and Robert Running Fox representing the Shoshone Gabriolino Nation. Our group is proposing to open a world-class museum in Santa Clarita, the Museum of the First Californians. This museum would be of national importance as it will be the first to feature all of the Native American tribes of California. The purpose of the Museum of the First Californians is to culturally and financially benefit Santa Clarita and the tribes of California through heritage tourism. The museum would help preserve historic resources, educate tourists and residents, and generate revenue for the local economy. It would feature interactive education, artifact exhibits, and cultural presenters or storytellers from each tribe. The museum board would have a rotation of tribal representatives working as advisors and educators. The museum also would feature revenue generating venues, such as space for corporate seminars and lectures, a theater for powwows and other traditional presentations, a native food cafe, and a museum store. To bring the Museum of the First Californians to Santa Clarita, we asked City Council to seriously consider granting us permission to move forward with our planning stages. We asked City Council to reserve the Rivendale Ranch land for five years, during which we would raise funds to build the museum. The museum would financially benefit Santa Clarita as a tourism destination. Its proposed location is highly visible and easily accessible, located directly off of the 5 freeway, the most heavily trafficked freeway system in the United States. It would attract thousands of additional visitors to Santa Clarita, increasing tourism revenue. For example, the Museum of Indian Arts and Culture in Santa Fe has more than 65,000 visitors each year. Half of those visitors come from other states and 20% arrive from other countries. The Indian Pueblo Cultural Center of Albuquerque, which features all of the state's pueblo tribes, has almost 300,000 visitors each year. Our museum in Santa Clarita will also attract visitors worldwide and will generate tourism dollars for decades to come. The museum would be built on disturbed land with graded areas, which would minimize the impact on the environment. The remaining land among the Santa Susana Mountains would stay preserved. This land is located at the southwest corner of the Santa Clarita Valley at the entrance of Ed Davis Park and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. The tribes have dreamt of being featured in one museum that is both an educational and spiritual destination. It is Santa Clarita's dream to learn about its history and preserve it. Now is the time to work together to make those dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Richard Angulo?
Mayor, City Council? I am Reverend Blackbear, also a spiritual leader of the Schumash Council. I had to tell you the story about the first Americans. In 1769, when Protola and Serra came to this area, they destroyed a lot of archaeological sites and a lot of Indian people. They put them in museums, I mean, in missions. And then in 1845 came the Americans, and they destroyed a lot of archaeological sites and a lot of Indian people. In fact, they even put a bounty on some of the Indian people. Now, here we are in 2008. From 2008 all the way back to 1700, they've been destroying archaeological sites and burial grounds. In 1974, we got permission to protect our archaeological sites and burial grounds. You people have destroyed a lot here in Santa Clarita, putting houses and roads the same as Thousand Oaks. But Thousand Oaks and I have saved a lot of archaeological sites and a lot of burial grounds. In fact, I saved quite a few here in Santa Clarita. Now, our museum that we proposed to build is for the future of our people as well as yours. Our children are losing all our culture because people are destroying it. Right now, they're in museums in all, all over the United States. Our artifacts are even in France and in Russia because they picked them up in 1832. Now, we want all the artifacts to stay here where they belong. Santa Clarita has got and has a lot of archaeological sites that are still intact, right where we want to build a museum. There are a lot of petroglyphs that need to be protected. Now, I know that a lot of you like to protect some of these sites, but a lot of you don't. I'm not talking about you people, but there are a lot of people who like to destroy, like developers, even archaeological, archaeologists like to destroy our sites. Right now, they're in museums in UCLA, they're in Santa Barbara, they're in the floor, on the bottom. There are missing fingers, fingertips, and people are using them for necklaces. Their skulls are missing, and they're using them for paperweights. We don't want that no more. We want to preserve them. And this place would be a good place to preserve and protect archaeological sites, especially what there, what's there now. And I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Phil Rollins, followed by Eugene Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know about you guys, but this old cowboy's pretty tired. And I'd like to talk about something I've talked about before. It's, I live in Quigley Canyon, which is in New Hall, just over the hill from Placerita Canyon. And I'm surrounded on two sides by open space. I've talked to this before here, that the oak tree in your seal, that's the way an oak tree is supposed to look. The oak trees on your property, the open space, don't look like that because they have old trees that have fallen down and are laying underneath them. And when we get a fire, like they had last week in Porter Ranch, where the sparks jumped eight-lane freeway, when those catch on fire, they're going to burn down Melody Ranch and Placerita Canyon. And I've been here and talked about this before, and I was told the Fish and Game Commission won't let us do it. I've taken the Fish and Game Commission out there and showed them that, and they said it's very dangerous. And for what little habitat there is, it's more important to the safety of the people. So that, that argument is gone. Of course, you know, you can't say the Fish and Game Commission won't let us do it. The next thing, Wayne Smith says, "Well, it's not within 300 feet of a, of a structure," which is maybe what the Fire Department would say. But when you see those sparks jumping and catching something on the other side of the freeway on fire, don't you think they could jump into Placerita Canyon? Now, if you want to talk to the Fish and Game person that I talked to, his name is, he was out there and looked at it, and he came out there with Wayne, is Dan Blankenship. His telephone number is 259-3750, if you want to check and see if I'm telling the truth. And it should be cleaned up. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Eugene A. Taylor, I believe, Jr.
It is Eugene A. Taylor, Jr. And one advantage of being near the end of the program, I feel very comfortable. I seem to know the place quite well. My background includes the fact that I'm a retired United States Army Colonel of Military Intelligence. I also became the senior political scientist at Citrus College, which you may know to be the oldest community college in Los Angeles County. I mention that background to perhaps make it easier for you to identify or concur with what I have to say because it involves the conduct of this body rather than matters that are general to the city of Santa Clarita. When California first became a state over 150 years ago, it had a constitution that was considered somewhat flawed, and as a result, it wasn't too many years until they created another constitution. And that constitution widely provided for the fact that offices below the state level would be nonpartisan. In other words, neutral and not identified with any political party. That was done for a number of reasons, one of which was it was felt that in big cities or even smaller cities, party participation by the city council could lend itself to corruption and malfeasance. And I think it was a very wise decision, which is carried out and has been uniformly within the state of California for a number of years. The problem is that we have a very heated election that's imminent and a campaign that's equally heated. Part of the campaign involves state offices, and this body has been put in the position of, perhaps unwittingly, endorsing one of the state offices for California State Senate. I received 14 mailers from this particular candidate. Several of them mentioned members of the city council by name as endorsing that person, and two of them, as in this particular case, read as follows, "The entire city council backs," and I won't mention the name, I'm not here to pillory any individual, "but merely the concept of your participation." And it goes on to state that this particular candidate has the official endorsement, I repeat, the official endorsement of the Santa Clarita mayor and the city council in its entirety. This is an unwise decision for the city council to have taken, and I would like to allude to the fact that earlier this evening, Councilmember Lorraine West, whom I know quite well, mentioned that you are people who appreciate the fact that the community is important. And the mayor himself said that when you team up with people, you succeed. I suggest that if you're going to team up with somebody, it should be a nonpartisan, neutral individual in the spirit of what this body should represent. And one final point, because my time is just about up, The Los Angeles Times recently endorsed the opponent to the person you are, you are representing, saying that the last thing the legislature needs is another member who has signed a no-tax pledge and will not engage in compromise with the state being in the condition that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Alan Firdman, followed by Tony Natoli, followed by Annette Lucas.
Okay, once again, Alan Firdman, Chair of the Canyon Country Advisory Committee. On behalf of myself and the 85, 84 other residents that attended Town Hall meeting last night, I'd like to thank Mayor Keller very much, also Ken Pulsecamp and Tina Haddad. I think it's, it's a very important thing to get the community together with our elected officials as much as possible and have open and honest dialogue. I know that all of you are extremely, are, do as much as you can to, to take care of our, our community. And when we can have that kind of discussion, it, it allows us to understand more that you're individuals and that we're discussing issues, and it takes the, the personalness out of, out of those things. So I'm hoping that the Town Hall meeting type concept is going to become a, a tradition. Possibly next year, Frank, you can start scheduling yours now. And we look forward to, to the, the further two meetings that you're going to have. And thank you very much for, for doing them.
Tony?
I, I too would like to mirror Alan's remarks, and that's basically what I wanted to say to you tonight, that the Town Hall meetings are a grassroots effort, gives us a little more than a couple of minutes, and we can gather our thoughts and speak as humans instead of giving each other speeches. And I'd like to see more of that happen. I'd like to see more come of it. I'm going to take a moment, though. You, you all know how, how upset I must be about the, the last vote. And there's some things I believe you're operating on that aren't true, and I'd like to comment on those now. The, the left turn restrictions that were put in place, pardon me, the right turn restrictions that were put in place at the top of Ben's in the morning, in the afternoon stuff are rarely enforced. And there are, by counts, and the data that I get from Andrew Yee's staff show that there's over 150 cars in a two-hour period that continue to make those turns, and I see the officers pull them over and let them go. And it's, and, and the second thing is, speed is an issue. But first, it's volume. And we started with 350 cars going up and down that street. We now have maximum of 3,300 cars going up and down that street, with an average of 2,400 cars going up and down that street. And that's not just during the week, that's seven days a week. Saturday nights are ridiculous. Horn honking, boy, when you said that, Frank, I went through the roof. I still cringe at horns honking, especially after that diverter thing. Lastly, diverters don't block a street. That was the genius of it. It diverted traffic. And yeah, I realize, you know, there's more people that objected than that, and I can understand why you pulled it. But right turn restrictions, such as what's going in at Cedar Valley, are methods that could be put in place that I hope you're not considering as blockages, because those are things that do work. And I'm looking forward to seeing something like that implemented soon. The, the speed bumps will not care for the volume, and the volume just keeps increasing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Annette?
Am I last? My name is Annette Lucas, and I reside in New Hall. And not so long ago, there were some issues brought up about neighbor, neighborhoods. And I would like to tell you that Wiley Canyon, from Evan Street to Calgrove, has not one stop sign. It has a blind curve that people speed around all the time. I think it was you, Bob, who said, "I would like the staff to go out and look at that." To this date, I have not heard or seen anybody taking a look at that intersection. There's not even a stop sign at Valley and, I mean, at Calgrove and Wiley. So this is becoming a huge problem. Another thing that I've been thinking about are the bus stops and the shelters. It was brought up that, you know, our city has these bus stops and these shelters, and they're handicap accessible, and, you know, da-da-da-da-da. Well, I'd like to know why our schoolchildren stand in the gravel with a bus stop pole, no shelter? And periodically, this bus stop gets moved off of Wiley and put back on Calgrove because somebody has said, "You know, I don't really like the kids standing here or there." I don't think kids should be standing anywhere on a gravel side of the road with a, no shelter from traffic. Lastly, the next thing I want to talk about are the new and improved street signs for Santa Clarita. They're beautiful. What I want to know is, what are the requirements to get these signs? I see the Wiley Canyon signs at Lyons, at Orchard Village, but I don't see any of those pretty signs at Wiley and Calgrove. Calgrove is an off-ramp to our city. And Calgrove is also the turn, the street that you're going to turn on to go down Wiley. Why don't we deserve the recognition? Are we the stepchild of this valley? Do we have to wait for an obnoxious development to get these things? Why do we look like the stepchild? Come on, step up to the plate, protect our children just as much as the others, put in some stop signs to make us look like we belong in this city, and check out the traffic when you go around that blind curve. It says 35. I'll bet you not two cars go 35 around that curve. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. City Manager comments?
As, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, with regard to the Native American Museum, I would suggest that these people provide us a, a written proposal, and we'll see what it is they're interested in. With regard to the oak trees around Mr. Rollins' property, I've had an opportunity to discuss this with our Parks and Rec Director. And the Parks Division, Urban Forestry, and Fish and Game went out. They did remove material per Fish and Games instructions. And this open space is really consistent with the way we manage our other open space. We aren't out there mowing weeds. It's, it's open space. It's natural. And...
natural, and it is consistent with what Fish and Game has directed us to do. With regard to the partisan comment, there have been no candidates that have been officially endorsed by this body. That being said, the council doesn't control what is printed in a political flyer, and they don't come and ask this body to do that. But I can assure them that this body has not officially endorsed any candidate. The enforcement of the right turns on to Ben's, I know I've had discussions with Captain LeBerge about that before. I can ask him what type of enforcement has been taking place. I know we've done a tremendous amount of enforcement on Ben's. It's not the only city, or the only street in the city that we have to enforce traffic on, but I'll discuss that with Captain LeBerge and see what we have been doing in that area. In terms of the pretty signs, I'm glad Ms. Lucas thinks they're pretty. I can assure her she and her neighborhood are not the stepchildren. It's nice to see people on the west side thinking they're stepchildren, though. But I want her to know, we still have a lot of these signs that are out in the yard, so she needs to be a little patient. They aren't all put up. In fact, Robert and I were out there the other day. There's stacks of these. We have the crews putting them up on the weekends, so it's going to take a while for us to get them all put up. It is fairly time-consuming. The bus shelters, that's still here, maybe you could talk to Darren and tell him exactly where the location is, and we'll... Okay, we'll take a look at that and see if there's anything going on there, and we'll get back to Ms. Lucas.
Ken, if I may, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carl.
One brief comment about political endorsements. A council member, upon becoming a council member, does not give up his or her constitutional rights to participate in elections. I think an unfortunate terminology may have been used as to an official endorsement. As City Manager said, there was no such thing. But you do certainly have a right to declare your support or opposition to candidates or political measures.
Thank you. And I wrote down the same thing. When you used the word official, obviously that was inappropriate. If that, in fact, was used on a flyer, it should have not occurred. I want to make comments about Mr. Rollins' concerns having to do with the trees. And I just simply say, the gentleman's not wrong. We can lose large stands of oak trees. And certainly, the case in point was last year with the fire over in the San Canyon area. There were a hundred and fifty, two-hundred oak trees lost. And it makes you sick to see them. And I know we have a lot of people here saying, "Protect the oak tree, protect the oak tree." And by the way, it wasn't city property either, I will tell you that. It's just that if there's a lot of fuel underneath them, and we don't try to minimize that a bit, we're going to lose those trees when the fire comes through. And I think that saddens all of us, and we certainly lost a lot there last year. Ken, I want to ask a favor. If you could have staff, one of the writers there, prepare a letter. I would like to send a letter to Caltrans, and if the council members would like to join me in signing it, a prerogative. But I'll tell you, I think it's a sad commentary as to how much litter and trash is all over the on-and-off ramps of the city of Santa Clarita. It's an embarrassment, no matter how you come into this city, I don't care which ramp you use, five or the fourteen. And that's using the word "stepchild." I'm feeling like a stepchild when you drive into this city, looking at all of the debris and litter. And I know we have organizations that try to police it up and impact it, but it really is disturbing when you see the degree of trash in that area. And with that, I appreciate Councilmember West mentioning Deputy Hanson. I'd like to adjourn in his name.
Just one comment.
Oh, Marsha.
Okay, I just, hopefully, this will make you feel a little bit better, Mr. Natoli. I have a friend who lives in Canyon Country, who went to visit a friend in your neighborhood and got a ticket for making a turn when he wasn't supposed to. Cost him three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. So there is some enforcement being done.
Thank you. As I say, we will... Did you want to say something, Lori?
I did. And I'm glad that we're adjourning. I just wanted to reflect on the fact that what the Native Americans have brought a proposal, and they have been working with Rickenstaff for a while, and I appreciate Ken's asking. They did drop a proposal, but it'd be very exciting to have a museum here. It would be unbelievably unique, and something of a national and state treasure promoting echo and cultural tourism and visitor-serving, which is really what Santa Clarita is doing as part of creating destination, just like some of our sports venues that we work so hard on. But Ken said, you know, some comments on it, but I'd like to make sure that we're going to have them work with staff, because, I mean, they can't work with us, so they have to work with staff. Is that fair, Ken?
That's a prerogative of the council.
Is that okay with the council?
Okay with me.
Okay. Mayor says okay.
I know. I apologize.
Lori's okay. I'm okay. Mayor's okay.
Regarding...
The Native Americans.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes.
I know you were busy down there. I didn't want to interrupt.
Sorry. It's okay.
Our next meeting will be November the nineteenth, six p.m. It'll be a special meeting of the City Council. Issue, I believe, that even will be with the Henry Mail and GNL expansion. November the nineteenth. The one for the eleventh was canceled.
Got canceled. The next one got canceled.
Right. It got canceled. Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience. Have a good evening.
On November seventh, two thousand and eight, at our College of the Canyons, the City of Santa Clarita, the LA Department of Public Health, College of the Canyons, the Sheriff and Fire Departments of Los Angeles County will all be teaming up to provide a drive-through flu shot clinic. More information, you can check out the city's website at santa-clarita.com.
The Santa Clarita Artists Association is hosting our annual fundraiser, The Art Classic. This gala event exhibits over one hundred professionally judged original artwork by local artists. Come enjoy musical entertainment, hors d'oeuvres, and meet the artists in person. This year, The Art Classic will be held at Hart Hall on Sunday, November ninth, from two to six p.m. The artwork will be on display for free public viewing on Saturday, November eighth, from ten a.m. to five p.m. For more information, call six-one-eight-zero-nine-three-nine, or visit us on the web.